The meeting of the 22nd meeting of the local city council will not be ordered. Roll call Craig.
Yeah, okay.
Mike, Pam, Devon. We will open the regular session for the order of business. If there are motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second? Mike, roll call vote Craig.
Yeah.
Ted, Mike, Pam, Devon. Deputy Sheriff Derek Kane, would you like to give your report? Come on up here to the table so we can hear our voice, please, thanks.
So in the April 2024, I saw 33 documented business checks, 37 miscellaneous patrol sessions, three bar checks, one council meeting, one park check, three case follow-ups, a total of five calls for service, one dog bite, a case was made, one dog large owner located, dog was returned to its home, one animal welfare check, all animals were well-fed and taken care of, one disturbance, everything was okay, it was a misunderstanding, and one theft, which a case was made. Any questions or comments on this?
Any questions for Sheriff Derek Kane? Thank you so much. We'll begin with the minutes of the April 8th city council meeting. Please review those. And if there are any edits, please indicate. And then we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the April 8th regular city council meeting.
What was that, your motion to approve the roll call?
We discussed that at the April 22nd meeting. And as, I think the discussion that night was that we were gonna wait until we interviewed the new attorney, is that correct, Hulby? Or the nuisance officer? We weren't gonna bring the nuisance officer in until, I think that was the discussion.
Since we still have items pending with Laura, he didn't want to start or even interview, so.
Did you understand that? The new attorney that we're looking at, the possibility of hiring, doesn't want to come before the council until we finish up the Dubuque Street property and conclude everything with our existing city attorney. So that means this could be several months.
Years.
Well, not years, maybe it's not that. Could be two, three, or four months, you know?
But you can still support this, but that's all.
Mike, roll call Craig, Devon, and Mike.
Is there a second? All second. Roll call Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devon. Minutes of the April 8th city council meeting have been approved. Now please review the minutes of the April 22nd special council meeting. After reviewing, we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve. Mike made a motion, is there a second?
Uh, there is.
Craig, roll call vote, Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devon. Please review the financial report for April. And after reviewing, if you have any questions, please ask. And then we'll entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
The loss fund has such a big receipt. And the fact that Banker gave their annual, thank goodness, they gave them so much towards the truck. And that's why we decided when we paid it from the loss funds, whatever Banker paid would go back into loss.
So that thirteen thousand from Banker?
Ten, I think. I think it was ten thousand.
And now is what they had allocated for Trey. Motion to approve. Pam made a motion to approve the financial report, is there a second?
All second.
Motion or second by Ted, roll call Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devon. Please review the bills for April. I see the tractor rental was twenty-five hundred dollars, what did cost us?
That was just the lease.
The lease, that's right.
We haven't got the tractor.
Oh, you haven't got the tractor, huh?
I'm surprised.
How long do we need to pavement?
A tractor, a month.
Just a month?
And a piece of bill there for, I assume that had been, we had to pay them right away or something? For the new door for the fire department?
Yeah, I ordered it online and put it on my card.
Okay.
I don't think he's got it installed yet.
Alright. That's what we did with the trees too.
The trees, yeah, they were on the card. So it was approved last fall.
Yeah. How many trees? So then that money will be distributed out of where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah, that's just what was paid on those cards.
Okay.
What's with the last of the one ten Dubuque Street, what was the rest of that, was that the?
The treasurers. We had to pay two years, since it was a tax certificate, we had to pay you two years in taxes. And then there was a, I knew there was a water lien on there, I was thinking the whole amount was water, but it was, the water was only three hundred fifty-six dollars. So I just paid the whole bill and we'll get it all back. Or if that was somebody else's portion too, so, President. Because it's hard to find somebody in the treasurer's office right now that will answer a question, so.
So the landfill bill, and then we have a mow-in bill here?
Right. And since that is, I'll get that bill to the mowers to have the roll-offs. Danger call, I think I went asking ten hundred dollars. But our deductibles are considerable more than what they were.
Is that for that twenty-six nine thirty, is it for their whole year, or six months, the whole year?
For the whole year. Thank goodness.
Yeah. So the landfill bill wasn't, that was absorbed? How many roll-offs could be on government? Four. And you said how many trees?
Seven, seven trees.
And they are going where?
Mostly up there.
Big part.
I'll make a motion to amend bills.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to the bills listed for April. Roll call Craig, Ted, Mike, Devon. The bills for April have been approved as printed. Residents guidelines, residents, residents concerned.
Hank better, 308 State Street. Hey, the park up there looks great after it got mowed for about twenty-four hours. And then the dandelions just completely took over, did you guys notice that? There's a little crap everywhere. Yeah. Is there any environmentally friendly, tree, agriculture-friendly stuff we can kill dandelions with? Because quite honestly, I'll never get rid of dandelions in my yard until
Till they're all broken.
Till we throw them back in that. I'm not mistaken, some folks with experience in agriculture, isn't there a noxious weed? State ordinance? Montana has one, I just kinda question if Iowa does.
Is dandel-, they do, but it's dandelions on the west.
I doubt it, but there again. Just questioning if there's something that the city could look at, you know, to kinda try and knock those down. You'll never kill them all, but knock them down a little bit. Geez, you'd have to mow every other day, screw the place. One other concern, if you don't mind my three minutes, are we gonna finish paving East Street? Or is that, or we're just not gonna do anything with that?
The street was just filled with crying animals.
Is that, is that what, or is that still planned?
I think that's what we did, the only thing we did was fill the cracks. There's been no other talks on it.
Where is it?
Please don't, no, don't do that.
That's all we did with that.
Okay, are we gonna?
They did, well, they did, it tarred. They put tar on this. They definitely filled the whole park.
So, what would they do with a street repair that nobody noticed?
I guess I didn't notice.
Wrong move.
Alright. Thanks, thanks, man.
I'm for city council.
Justin Love, 201 State Street. This is something I feel pretty strongly about, so I'm just gonna keep harping on it, I guess, until we see where it's going. But I for one, I feel like there's gotta be quite a few other people in this town who moved here with the idea that it's a taste of country life, you know, with the amenities and services of a small town. I mean, we don't want anybody approaching anybody else or causing anybody else problems, but you know, I saw the minutes in the paper, the ground you register or whatever. And to me, that painted a worse picture of this town than what we actually have, you know? I know there's issues, but I think we're doing a good job of making it out to be a lot worse than what it actually is. I know there's some people that would like to have a nuisance officer and outside identity come in here. And, you know, that's just not the way I wanna live. I feel like I do a pretty good job keeping up on my stuff, but you know, there's always something to do. And I don't mean somebody else finding something for me to do, you know? I think if council has a big enough issue and feels strong enough that they should be able to address it themselves, you know, if there's a safety concern, we already paid for law enforcement out here, you know, you can definitely get them involved. If I'm not mistaken, it's the mayor's duty as a nuisance officer in small towns like this. You know, you guys bolted with the house down there, right or wrong, I had every right to look like crap. It's something that's been needed done, but I mean, you have all the power and means to take care of these things. I just don't feel like it's beneficial to pay somebody else to come in here and do that job for us, you know? The park, I participated in that, I seen how it went. It seemed like it was imperative to ask the residents what kind of playground equipment we should put down there. I just hope that if we're thinking about implementing all these nuisance officer ordinances, whatever's gonna happen, I think we oughta get some input from the residents, you know, and not just the people that come up here. I think we oughta make known widely that this is taking place. If it comes down to it, you know, I think maybe we oughta just select somebody from the city or from the town to go and take care of this, you know, to have a conversation with these people that there's such an issue with, you know? Like I said, I think if it's that big of a deal, the council oughta address it, you know, directly. Instead of getting somebody else involved, I think that's a top out, you know? And I don't think that's gonna help build a stronger community, you know, I just don't think it is. That being said, I would volunteer, and it irks me because, you know, I've seen a lot of things discussed that just don't seem like that big of a deal. Like I said, you see it in the minutes in the paper, and it makes this town out to be a dump. I don't, I don't like seeing that, you know? I don't think it is, I just don't. Aside from that, I wanna thank Darwin and the city, Darwin was a big help down there at the roll-offs. And I wanna thank the city for, you know, providing us with our tax dollars to help clean up the town. It does make a real positive impact. Thank you.
I got something I wanna add to that. You talk about law enforcement. I've been threatened twice by the same person, they'll shoot me. Hank could wear it one time, the deputy did nothing. The second time, he hauled him off to jail. The time he got him to jail, the time they got the paperwork, he was walking down highway, so.
There's always gonna be bad actors, I just hate to see everybody punished just because of one or two.
That would relieve me or any accountants that would put up with something like that.
And what's a nuisance officer?
I would volunteer, I would volunteer to talk to people.
Right. It's just another voice bitching.
I'm not scared.
Well, I think, I think we were told not to go on personal property, is that correct? We are not to go on personal property.
Why would you need to?
Do what?
Why would you need to?
Well, if you wanna go and talk to somebody to get, yeah.
But you can pay somebody to do it?
Well, they're high, they carry the bags.
It'd be like a certified letter.
Certified letter?
Certified letters only work if they sign for it.
You guys bolted with the house, don't tell them you can't get shit done.
There's, there's nothing that can be done regarding this tonight, so.
I just, just in my opinion.
Yes, and we appreciate your concern, but as far as, there's no decisions that can be made tonight.
Did I ask for one?
What'd you say?
I did not ask for one.
What, Devon?
It's just a discussion on a current issue.
Are there any other residents concerned?
Jim, 201 Dearborn. I notice if we drive down Dearborn, and with how cattywampus the town is, is this west, southwest, what?
It sits at like a forty-two degree angle.
So anyways, down Dearborn on this end of town, you have multiple four-way intersections, all stop intersections. Yet Dubuque and Dearborn over here have none, no stop signs at all. Can, can I request two stop signs? I don't even care what direction they are, just try and slow some traffic down at that end on that one intersection?
Jim, what's your name?
Jim, last name Holbert, H-U-L-B-E-R-T. I just noticed like when, when school drop-off happens, we have a lot of traffic running up and around that, pretty good speed.
So if we put a stop sign at, what is that, Dubuque Street?
Dearborn and Dubuque? Yes.
So would be on this side, would that?
Well, either way.
It doesn't matter which way, it's just, you're not from the town, like when we first moved up here, I didn't realize I was going this way, I didn't realize there wasn't a stop sign that way. And if there was something coming, I would've been stopped, so.
Well, they don't stop by the house.
And those instances are supposed to be.
We can put that on the agenda.
Didn't realize there wasn't any.
We can put that on the agenda for the next meeting and discuss that. That would be an ordinance change, which would need three readings.
Yeah, just, just a request.
Any other residents concerned?
These properties that people own, the grass is getting this tall. Who's in charge of that? You know, because they complain about other people's.
Talking about it tonight. It comes.
Okay, that'll come up here in a minute. Any other residents concerned? Okay, nuisances, so we do have property where the grass is too long.
Small property.
How about?
You bank property.
We're at a small and close.
You bank, within town. Co.
What about Robin up there, always has. He has a backyard. And here we go.
Is it over ours, our, what is it, eight inches, ten? So let's see, we send letters, right?
Well, they're beginning to own them all. You know, nobody lives on those properties, so. I mean, that's, we have done that in the past. We send that, people love it, and then it's the way they do days, and if they don't, then they're going to own them, since that, I'm going to get it today.
What are your wishes on this?
We gotta get it done before the first of August.
I was gonna say, well, I'd like to, I'd like to see it, not only the Lord of Days, make sure that it's, it looks nice.
No, there's, there's a, they can only receive a letter once a month, right?
You send them one letter, they're never gonna answer it. You send them one letter, they're not gonna answer it.
I thought, I thought they didn't send the seventh, except for seven weeks or so.
I didn't understand, you've acknowledged the letter last year, so what makes you think they're gonna acknowledge the letter this year?
Well, you still have, no, we just have to send a letter. It happens to every homeowner, I've heard both ways. One for the year, or one for every homeowner. Okay, that are both ways, that's why I'm unsure. We can ask each other. So send these letters.
Do you want Christie to send those over? Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second? Roll call vote, Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devon.
So the smallest property, who are you gonna send the letters to, just say?
Whoever's on the, that is his name still on the, whoever's name is on the tax.
In order for us to sell, we had to contact Richard's kids, Gary, or, yeah, not Gary. Larry's, Larry's mall. And then Connie's kid on Colorado.
So that's how your name ended up on that tax?
Me and, well, Larry's mall, me and Bonnie are the only ones on it if you go to the quarters office. But if we try to sell it, we have to make sure they all agree. My lawyer said it's a mess, and I'm done taking care of the place, do what you gotta do.
Sounds like you're sharpening your words.
Sorry, I kept it up for six years.
No help.
And no help, and old answers back to us, but a sell it, so. And I got, you know, three or four thousand dollars instead, I cleaned up the trailer house. Mowed it, I cleaned up the sticks and stuff. Nobody seems the one to help, so. And we paid no taxes for those six years. And nobody's paid the taxes for quite several years, so it's probably going up for tax.
For the mowing, like, I'll do a fair deal on mowing.
What's that?
Say, if for the mowing, like, when you finally have to do all the, mow all the properties, I'll give you guys a fair deal on mowing.
City's got the mowers.
I'm just saying, somebody's gotta run them, like.
Anyway, that's, that's why it hasn't been cleaned up for the last two, three years.
Pam, people, other people run the lawnmowers?
We appreciate liability insurance, I don't know if our liability insurance will cover some accidents.
Alright, item number two, action on 10911 Dubuque Street, Pam, where are we at on this? Where are we at on this?
Um, last month, there was a question. Uh, let's see. That the council wanted to know...
Would they?
This is, I had to give a full attorney, is what I was told. Let's see, on the second page, a new home must be built on a property and have construction completed within two years of the date of the purchase. Extensions to this time limitation may only be granted by special, specific permission from the city council. The question is going to the attorney. The question the council brought up is what can be done if this is not followed? What actions can the city take if the home is not completed in two years? And her answer is... Let's see, she checked into it. And I finally got an answer today. Possibly the best method would be to include in the bid request language some framework that bidders would agree to which permit forfeiture of the transfer, which permit forfeiture of the transfer if no construction is commenced within two years. Essentially, the parties would execute a deed held in escrow that will be used upon default or destroyed upon completion of construction. Or imposing some civil penalty for each day past two years that construction is not complete. The issues arise in the middle ground between when construction is started and when it is substantially complete. So... Now we need the exact terminology to put in the contract from the attorney. But the question is, do you want to do this? Uh, there's two, two choices here. We can put it in there that if you're not done completely built within two years, they default and it comes back to us. Or do we impose a penalty for each day past the two years that is not complete? Now, mind you, we don't even know if we're gonna get any bids on this. But this needs to be put in there because the council wanted teeth in this contract. In other words, if it doesn't get done, what happens?
But you can't get no, that's the contractors.
Well, that's...
They'll tell you they're gonna be there and they don't show up.
That's, yeah.
Well, two years before the project gets blown, get the project done. They gotta another two years before it blows them.
When you can't, you can't...
You can't blow them up if you can't get a contractor to do the work.
Can't for a whole month, can't even wait to build them.
So we can keep them?
Uh, so, yeah, what? I mean, she's talking about this, doing this escrow thing. She's gonna have to tell us how to do it, because I don't have, you know?
So you would choose one or the other, right?
Yes.
An escrow, right?
So what does lawyer you got?
They won't touch it, touch us until this is done.
You gotta get this, but this has to be done.
Why are you putting restrictions on my property?
Hang on here, just a second. Let's, let's try to get through this right now.
So here's your options to me. If you keep the home, you gotta build a home. You have the option, is this an escrow or a new supply? Or you don't have that, you just sell in property. I mean, there's, there's three options there.
Well, it's not all we can just sold it just like this, all the gifts and the property items, right?
So maybe, and not actually move it. Or you might get somebody that wants to build a nice shed and that already lives in town, but there's a boat in their camper and... Yeah, I don't know. As long as, you know, whatever they clean, they'll walk.
So, whoa. Somebody bothers you, you don't, whoa.
Just two thoughts, and I'm not gonna say anything more, because I know I'm the only one with this opinion. It sounds like most meetings, but, um... One is, I think you're gonna run into just a bunch of headaches for the council just selling it like this. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Secondly, it is so absorbently expensive to build a house right now. I love the idea for somebody to build a house there. I think it's great. I just think it's gonna be a very hard seller, this could... Maybe if your requirement was, they could pull in a trailer, I don't know. Um, I'm just saying, I'm currently going through trying to get some quotes on housework. And the quotes have been just almost out of this world, like, for what I'm gonna get. And I'm just trying to add on to a house. And I know you could set any square footage idea you had. Originally, I think we talked about fourteen hundred square feet or something. I'm talking half of that right now. And it's well under a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm just saying, I think it's gonna be a very hard sell, this could, to have anybody come in and do that. Unless, you know, your mom wanted to go build this small house to live on so Jim could have, I'm just hypothetically. And she lived in town, you know, and she didn't care how much she spent. I'm just, I just think it's gonna be really hard selling. So I'm not arguing or anything. I, I would love to see it. I just think it's gonna be really hard. So that's all I can say on it. I know, I know, it's, it's very difficult. And as far as your two-year timeline, I'm currently on, on almost five getting numbers. So...
Five years?
No, five months.
Oh, five.
But I'm just saying, for that whole process. And I'm not even that far along.
Tell me your thoughts.
Well, it sounds like what the lawyer says, if you, if it signed up, if nothing happens within two years and then it's supposed to just come back to, to the town. That sounds like the easiest. If you're in a charge of X amount of offers, they're not gonna pay that. And then we're gonna go through legal fees trying to get them to pay that. So if there's a disclosure in that, of whatever we do, that says if you don't do this within a certain amount of time, that it will come, it seems pretty simple. But now, that still might not be true. Look at all the time we spent just getting rid of what we have. So when you're talking to a lawyer, it'd be nice if we just get done with that, you know, whatever. Just maybe table it until that lawyer is long enough to... What about that?
Well, if you guys say, okay, if you said we're not going to sell it until October or so, you know? Put a date out there and just say, well, if we set it to wait, then technically you're done.
I think that'd be a lot better because...
You're still gonna have the decision of, well, we wouldn't have, I mean, I don't know that we, that would tie her up necessarily.
Our experience with this lawyer is just, they referred us to one of them, Zeta Rapids, how well did that go?
Well, part of that is just the property itself.
I know, but still, they referred it to there. We paid that lawyer, we paid, if, I'm personally, I think I'm done with this lawyer. So we get whatever business she has done, we have, get that done, we'll proceed with the new lawyer. That's what I...
I agree. I, I would just assume table this until the new lawyer, new lawyer comes aboard. Because if we do this and he has agreed with this, then he's gonna have to deal with something somebody else set up.
Right. And he's more, he's, he does more city work.
She, yeah, yeah.
He's, I mean, he's a...
Yes.
One more question. Say you decide to try and sell it like this with requirements. How long do we, or are you willing to have it up for bidding? And nobody bids on it hypothetically, just hypothetically. Are you gonna only wait six months? Are you gonna wait two years? I have no clue.
I don't know how long we have to put a sealed bid up there.
So, I'm just, you know, if we, if it's up to a year, you never got one bid, do we? Change our revenue.
Yeah, I mean, there's some timeline that I have to be there. I don't know if that's the beginning and the end times.
There was a resolution, had to be a resolution.
Yeah, there's two resolutions involved in all of this, but...
Well, how...
Even with him, you're still gonna have to decide who wants to put all of that on there or just sell it as a...
But he may, he may be able to lead us, since he is a municipal attorney. He may be able to take our hand and say, okay, this is how we should, you know? A little bit more advice than what we're getting.
And then they, oh, just, yeah, just keep in mind, it might still be more money go out on that property, so... So need a motion to decide whether or not you're gonna continue with trying to sell or not at this point?
Well, that's a little graphic with the lawyer, make a motion and just table the discussion. How am I gonna do it?
Stay by it, or something.
Do you think, I, do you think we can have, I think it's gonna have to be two, but time you get him here to interview...
It says like September.
Okay.
Can you just put this fall? That gives us...
It's all going to come in June.
It's all gonna depend, he may have, it's all gonna depend on when we can get him, depending on the city council meeting.
Deciding not to sell at this point.
Yes.
So are we tabling or deciding not to sell? What are we doing?
We'll table it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table.
Discussion.
There, there was a second, okay, so there's a second. So now we need a roll call vote, Craig, Ted, Mike, Cam, Ted. So that will table until...
Just a future date.
Future date. Okay. Community building update, Mike.
Well, we've talked about blinds. We got, you know, last month, we had some questions. Yeah, this is what, and it's the same exact brand as your aunt's.
I just so happened that I went and picked up a sample.
You picked it up.
I picked up a sample book from Strand's today and I picked up the sample book from Julie and they're exactly the same book.
Yeah, and they were, Julie's, seven hundred dollars cheaper than the new one. Seven hundred and thirty-six mils.
I am not trying to argue, but why are they moving on us? They are following orders.
Yes, they don't, they don't, and they don't...
That's missing. That one's missing a couple pieces. They've been up there since then.
That's fine, I'm just curious, are they actually shopping or whatever, just looking that up?
What are your thoughts on moving ahead with blinds?
I'd make a motion if they were to move them forward.
Very, very, uh, motion by Mike.
So which?
It'd be Julie.
Uh, Julie.
Yeah, so are they installing them?
Yes.
And, so, what about colors?
Well, we need to look at the paint and look at the...
I'm not really a fan of the tannins. Shouldn't we probably get community input?
You got community right here.
Are you really asking?
The price is seven hundred and thirty-six mils. I think you better talk to the cleaning lady. We have a motion on the floor, but I'll leave there to second.
I'm sorry.
Ted. Okay, there's a motion to purchase blinds from Jay Thomas Interiors in Marshalltown for the amount of seven hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents installed. Roll call vote, Craig.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Cam, yeah, Ted.
How are agents' colors?
I don't know. We'll talk a little, uh, get the community input after the meeting.
Well, there's...
Do you for real?
Yeah, they're gonna, well, I mean, they're just...
Pretty much.
Let's hold them on the lighter and talk. Okay, um, liberty and most of them. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. I just did a, uh, I just asked Hopkins to do a price quote for some new LED fixtures and, um, maybe like panel lights, just for curiosity to see what, what they would do. I think probably out of our ballpark.
That's Hopkins Electrical?
Yeah. Ten thousand dollars to put in, I think it was, fifteen maybe lights.
I just put all LEDs in here.
Yeah.
And adding six more fixtures.
I mean, outside ones. Oh, that was, um, some outside lighting. I didn't even, um... We were just talking about how to get more light in here to get this, Mike and I were talking about how to get more light in here to get it brighter and...
You have them under water, LED? Pick the valves out? Put your valve in, yeah, that's what we do. Oh, you, they're actually having valves, LED valves.
So I don't think this is, I don't, I don't think this would be realistic at all.
What about, they asked for sound panels from... I'm assuming they're like, I was in the Beeman. It's kinda like this. And they have the tickets, we see. They also have their, uh, quilts on the wall, which I suspect that probably is...
I've been curious, did they tell you any ratings on these? Cause I actually, I did some ratings on the sounder.
Did that's talk more about...
They did, I, I did none.
They didn't give you any on? See, I did some reading and ratings, I'd be curious about that. But this wasn't them installing, right?
No, these are ourselves.
I mean, if we're still gonna have it installed ourselves, they're still far cheaper out on the line that are good quality.
Well, I talked to the one who is the company that came in and looked at the building, which he met with some reps. They talked on the spray on, ceiling stuff is what they discussed. I, I'm a company, it's sprayed on docked on, I think it's, they was, I think I called them, they were, they were up here that does that. I guess it's, they spray it on the ceiling somehow, I'm not sure how it works, but... Maybe they say that's, it's, they say that it's actually like a drop ceiling, the way it works, you know, like it's the best thing, it's a drop ceiling.
You're saying it acts like a drop ceiling?
That's the way they say that. And they don't sell it. They were just, they recommend it, uh, towards up into the cell panels and the side panels, maybe the curtains and the drapes and stuff like that, so... I'm sure they're gonna be doing what they're talking about, it's not something that we saw, so... I just have another, I think that's...
I'll ask Strand if they're in the rating, I was just asking.
Cause it's like a sensor rating of like, sound absorption or, or. Like, like a feedback compared to, so there's, there's panels, excuse me, that stop all the noise from like, if there's an apartment that's at this wall, right, it would stop it from soaking all the way through. But then there's other ones that, they just don't cut as much, cause you wouldn't want it, from what I read, said you wouldn't want it to cut out all the noise, cause it almost sounds dead, even when you're in big areas. So I guess I'm just curious on something like that, but I'd still suggest maybe looking online, just, there's lots of places that sell them, but we're gonna have to install them anyways, or have somebody install them. I just feel like there's a cheaper option that are gonna be just as good. I mean, most of them run two hundred and fifty bucks tops per panel compared to a four hundred.
One, the way I, where you're, those, he wasn't really impressed with those. It was a lot of good. I'm gonna chuck this spray on, okay?
Is there one in our?
I don't know.
So we continue to work on this. Any other questions on the building?
Uh, do you want something here on this, or?
Uh, the Liberty and Musco committee met on April seventeenth, and they have another meeting on, um, they established a schedule, which was in the city new water. So, um, there'll be a parade in the summer, and then their, um, committee decided on several new things. Uh, seven P M, that'll be the playground ribbon cutting to, uh, right, or to honor the new playground and the sponsors and those kinds of things.
Is there something you're wanting done? Like, I mean, do you have a specific idea?
You know, whatever, whatever people want. Did we ever, we didn't have anything specific on that, whatever you.
I guess, nothing unique, at least.
Um, and then a pie auction, Pam's working on that.
So if you're a pie maker, please make one. We've lost all our elderly.
Do they need this?
The most powerful room?
Do people need to sign afterwards?
No, just for one.
Probably have a time to have.
And the money is going, where did that, proceeds are going to?
The. Yeah, this year. Um, and then, uh, after the pie auction, till, uh, dark, some games at the school park, encouraging people to bring yard games to play, and then at dark, fireworks. He's smiling. Are you?
Yeah, you, Junior.
Yeah.
Hey, Junior, can I ask you a question? How do you get the trailer down there?
Uh, I take it somewhere.
No, 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 like what route?
Uh, I come out, I come out around Ted's building there, and then come down.
Around the building and down.
No, on the south side of it, right on the south side. I come down at a lego, and then come where the old, uh, I probably don't know where the old bathroom was, but I come right, right by the swing set, by the old bathroom, and.
Cause we're gonna plant some trees up there, and I want it to stay out of your way.
Yeah, just give me a shot in, and you gotta make it big enough so I can make a lip to get out. Cause I gotta make that lip to come back out, to come back the same route. I can drive down there sometime, grab your, just take it and walk it down there.
Maybe I'll shoot you a second.
Uh, nothing drastic. I counted, I did have the numbers when I worked on this. There's twenty-five sponsors to date, and there's six new sponsors, and we're at fifty-eight hundred dollars, and I know that there's more coming in because, uh, people have said so, so just kinda wait. Anybody have any questions on this?
I talked to Mark Anderson, I could, could go meet with him, I don't know if it'd be a use of my time, the guy that you, I mean, he. My issue is, I don't know where he stores the fireworks, I don't know what, you know, how old they are. He said something about the igniter system, and that's thousands of dollars, I mean.
Well, he said he's got everything to do.
Right. And I say I got a blue cow at home, but don't, you know.
Well, he's, he's done this.
Yeah.
Um, but he, uh, and he's in the insurance business.
And, and he might be a good option going forward, cause this variable possibly could be my last year with it, so.
Okay.
Something to think about, I don't, I'll come to that conclusion as we get closer to the end date, but, um, he might be a good option for you guys to, to see what he'll charge to do it next year.
Okay.
This variable might be my last time doing it, um, but I don't know if that's an option for me while I'm still doing it. I don't wanna do secondhand fireworks, I like to actually go to a place where I know they're stored properly, and I can be safe for my own safety. I know he says that he's legit, good for him, um, that's no disrespect or anything like that, I just, for my own peace of mind. I, I've done it this way, it's where I kinda do it, it's worked out well.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I just thought you can probably get them cheaper for.
No, I, I appreciate the info, I just.
Yep, no, that's fine.
For my own peace of mind, I just would rather not.
Okay. We have two bills, um, that we would like to have the council approve. One is to Junior for fifty-five hundred dollars for fireworks, and the other one is to Circle C Sign for two new banners, because we had to change, we couldn't have just added a number on July. We had to put June in, always before the ladies, just giving me a new number of Velcro on, and I could just stick a new number on, but we had to go to June this year.
Can you send me a itinerary, Christie of the events and all that?
Okay, I wonder if you're in that.
I, I need email to me, so I don't have to scan it, I just, you got an email, so I can, I don't wanna have to scan it.
Oh, your bills.
No, itinerary, I have the se- schedule email to me.
You got one?
Yeah.
Oh, you don't want it tonight?
I don't wanna paper copy, I wanna email, so I can copy and paste, make it that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the banners were how much?
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
Is there a reason we use this personally? The fans said you got none of them.
I did, I got this from Minuteman, and by the time that I did new artwork with them, it was a little bit cheaper, but not as.
It seems we use Minuteman running out of ball, and we don't pay anyone near this kind of money, the banner. Um, they're mesh banners, for rain, or winds mostly so through closely. But, uh, just curious, because I think we spend about forty-eight bucks a banner. And, granted, I will say, the artwork, I don't know how much that costs, because we're generally using businesses lowest.
Right.
So that may be where.
I had to, I was, I called Minuteman and talked to them, uh, they were gonna have to design all the artwork for us.
What if the artwork was done, they would accept it properly?
No, they were still gonna have to work.
Convert it, man, kinda.
I've just worked with this lady for, uh, four years, and she's been great to work with, she's not charged us anything when we had to get new numbers, and she just sends them to us, and we never pay anything, and, so.
Did you ever mention that list?
No, I do not, I, I called it.
We need a motion to pay for these two.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll.
Roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike. Pam, yes, definitely.
Yes.
Okay, um, siren project.
Um, they're still waiting on two electricians to get, or two sirens for the electricians to get to before they can start testing sirens individually. They just wanna make one trip, cause I think they come from Kansas City. So, we're waiting on some electricians to get their work done. So hopefully by next month, they'll be up and going.
So did our siren go bad, or they just unlocked?
Our old one's gone, the new one is there, but they don't, don't have software.
I know. I just wanted to find if we can keep our old one until they got the new one.
Cause we put the old, the new one where the old is. It's in the same hall. It's in the same hall.
Same hall.
Same hall.
Well, it's not very good timing.
Well, those are only outdoor warning anyway, Ted.
Yeah.
What's that?
Those are outdoor, those are, the sirens are meant for outdoors, not indoor.
Even though Rick Shepard.
They're an outdoor siren, oh, boy.
No, I think he means when we're having a tornado.
Well, I know, but you're inside, you should have your phone, or your weather radio, go, I mean, that is, that is emergency management, or whoever's hooked that. That's their thought on the sirens, is if you're at the park and you're not paying attention, then the siren goes off, then you know. So, if you're out playing bowling at the park, then pay attention to the weather until it's hooked up again. But that has been reinstated over, over again by Kim.
It's not about the siren project, but I was, maybe somebody else can answer this. I got a question from the community about if that siren would go off if we had no flatline duration light wings coming through.
Anything over sixty miles an hour should.
It will go off, okay, cause that's what they said, they were asking if that was true.
Yeah.
And I said I did not know, but I would ask.
Anything over sixty miles an hour, they need to put them off.
Okay, thank you.
Whether they're doing that or not, I can't confirm, but that's the regulations that EMA puts up.
Okay, thank you.
That decision is made by the council that morning.
Yes, yes.
Any more on the siren? Update on car installation equipment, or car compartment installation?
Cars all installed, good to go, Darwin did a good job with the rock, thank you for doing all that.
Very, wow, very.
Okay, same, I thought somebody else helped you. Um, the only other thing I had to say was, uh, merry round update?
Buy by.
There's no getting anybody to.
I don't know, do you want, you wanna redo the whole buy, lay on?
That's what I'm asking, cause to buy a brand new one is very expensive.
How long ago was that, when you had a fix on?
Couple years.
So I'm asking, is there somebody to refabricate a bottom to it?
A little part taken over time right now. Well, the shop.
I'm wondering if we get.
Equipment to do with it.
I'm wondering if we get a quote to refabricate the bottom, because to get a brand new one is north of nineteen thousand. No, I know, that's what I'm saying, it's not gonna happen anyways.
Yeah, until you get married around, they gotta break it for you.
Yes, they have to.
So they wanna go for that.
Yep.
Yeah, but would you say nineteen thousand?
No, nine to ten thousand, just to buy them.
Jesus.
That size of one. And if you get smaller ones, they're a lot cheaper, but that basic same model, I mean, two thousand dollars.
Merry round?
And that's not installed.
So I was just a pondered margin of difference.
Other than that, I, that's, the parking seat turned out pretty nice.
That was very nice, yeah, very nice.
I just, I'm honored, will you say this? I, I'm disappointed. Because that company told Devon, Devon told us, they were for age group five to thirteen.
No, five to twelve.
Well, I can't imagine the twirlers that's flying out. Now, maybe I'm a little bit.
I was excited for it.
Okay.
But that's fine, that's fine, that's.
And, and they said the size level bigger. Big ones have to do with how far, we got, they weigh eight foot from the slide, and they're long, eight foot, eight to twelve foot from the slide. That's where they got out there.
That, the space is.
It's about as big as I expected, I guess, but I had gone in.
Yeah, the size would be good on that.
I would, again, this is not, we're gonna talk about seriously tonight. At some point, I would like to put together a bit of a savings plan to install some sort of lighting system. Somewhere, even if it's up there for a little bit older kids. Again, that scares off, and just at some point, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe get that ball rolling at some point.
Andrew.
We'll get Google Play for Lurk.
Any more on the car, thank you Devon, thank you Darwin, thank you Mike, you worked on that too, thanks to all, thank you. All right, uh, bits for the old playground equipment.
I got one.
Well, that's gonna be too tough. Uh, six hundred bucks?
Better curb area, maybe, so.
From who?
J J Johnson?
Oh, I know.
Oh, man.
That says.
So you made a motion?
Yep.
I made a motion.
All right. So there's a motion to accept the date, is there a second? One second. Uh, roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted, Mike, Pam, yes, definitely. Update on cleanup days, anything on that?
Well, I got one thing to say. Next year, let's take the third yard out, one house.
What'd you say?
Don't even listen. That would be really.
I don't know how we can listen.
Well, see, now, there's no sense of that, courts like that, all you're welcome to bring everything down there and fill it up.
Well, there again, Darwin, you can't tell people how to listen.
Okay, then let's limit.
The whole point is.
Then how do you enforce that?
Then limit.
Can we scale up to limit on that?
They could've took all that cardboard, you'd be never concerned.
Oh, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, so, I just figured somebody brought it on.
I got one person household here in Dallas, they save all the cart, well, they stack it through, and they brought six trailers down, that I counted.
Not a lot.
Now, what they didn't, that I didn't see, was different. But they could've took the redemption center after that, instead of us having to pay for a moment. But it ju- it just makes the worst on everybody else of trying to get something down there.
Did you hear it down first? Do you see this whole cardboard?
Huh?
Is it all cardboard?
Six floors of ice cream come down, it was all cardboard.
Broke it down?
Yeah, they had it all roped down.
All right.
It's jump day, right?
Shouldn't walk that property, it's on the house with it.
Um, I'd say, in all actuality, cleanup days work really, really well. Thank you Darwin for all your work on that, I know it takes extra time, I really appreciate it. Your business, uh, computer purchase.
Mine that I'm using is nine years old. Um, it's getting slower and slower. The computer guy with Dad is like, it's time for everyone, so, um, what he's found, actually, one of them is cheaper, when I pull it up, the new person to me. It's roughly nine hundred dollars to get a new, um, marker, I, and screen. So.
What kind of?
Um. Yeah.
It's the one you want?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a weird thing that is vegan? I don't know.
The ones in the, the covers?
Oh, that's a vegan.
That's it.
That's, it'll, I think for Isaac to move from the old to the vegan, so that's.
All right. Thoughts on the new computer for Christie?
I appreciate you.
I think we need, yeah, I think we need to invest. All right, there are motions?
Yeah.
Uh, second?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried. Uh, fixing tile line.
Austin town. Making tile lines, put it down through there, flooded by our house, by the trailer. The church, it's all church tile line, it's blown, it's coming up to the ground.
Not by our place?
Yeah.
Is that the one that crosses the street, who's out there? Where's it coming from?
It's coming out along the back of the house, that's, yeah. It was boiling up pretty good the other day, when I'm down there. And it, what it amounts to is, these people wanna plant tree for tile lines. That's the old tile line, we got to town, they're all tape tile lines, the roots are flattened.
So that's probably what's happened to that one now?
Yeah, I know it was that one.
There's a tree there.
Yeah, we got a willow tree, we had to see what was kind of tree in that, next to a tile line. So.
And that was planted before Melinda was in there, correct?
Yeah. And I got the same thing going on the other side of the street, we planted trees in the ditch.
Cancel.
And they're right, I cracked down, that's where they're gonna head for, what I tried, right, the tile line. My story, what is them, you won't live on them. My story was them, you won't live on them. Give them that big, travel that far.
Can we put something in the newsletter next month? Before you plant a tree, please see the city.
Oh, all right.
Yes. Make sure you're doing a nine-one-one call.
Nine-one-one.
Please, yeah. Don't be doing a nine-one-one call, yeah. Now we need the nine-one-one call, because it's coming up, yeah.
What do you need? I don't know, what do you need for this then?
I gotta get needed rope. Hook on the work we find and follow that, and then go down the road. I need, hopefully, don't have to go road.
Gonna just fix where it's broke right there?
Well, I imagine it's probably a third foot in there. But she said her tile line was plugged, and she said the roots are sore.
Who's he talking about?
And that's flat, so I don't know how that happened.
Is that, somewhere like running out there by the road and all of that? So it's still doing some good.
Now, see, he cleaned the ditch out in front of the crossroad to the ditch. More there now.
Yeah.
So, he'll return us that three.
We need a motion to each other, we're just getting that.
Well, we have the work done.
All right, um, we need a motion to fix the tile line.
Look, darling, but.
Right. Okay, Craig made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ted, second. Roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike. Pam.
Yes.
Devon.
You.
Okay, that's a motion to fix the tile line. Uh, a bid on for gutters from Sean.
We got two. There's one that's across the whole back. One in quarter to the other, including that storage room. And then there's one that's just a lower part, just a community building.
So it's fifteen hundred for all, and a thousand just was created.
Right.
I'll make a motion to reply that.
Just the whole back of the building?
Wait, the motion is to do the fifteen hundred?
Yep.
Yeah.
The whole back.
The whole back of the building.
That's just a community building.
No, we've got the whole back of the building. That includes the fire station. The whole back includes the fire station. Community building for a thousand is just short.
Well, if it needs replaced on there, they need replaced, we just will do it. Five hundred dollars now versus to get that later is gonna be a lot more.
So who made that motion? Did you, Mike seconded it.
Oh, Mike made it. Whatever.
Who do you know?
Doesn't matter.
I got almost figured out how much.
So.
Just choose.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
Their motion, Mike and Ted made a motion for fifteen hundred dollars to do gutter work. Mike seconded it. Roll call vote.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Pam.
Yeah.
Devon, so that does the whole back of the building and, or both community and fire station. All right, um.
I know. I couldn't figure that out for sure.
Oh, okay, okay, that. So, um, before we go into committee reports, I'd like to extend sympathy to Christie and Devon on the loss of their father-in-law and grandfather, making express apologies to these two. Uh, fire department, any report?
Ben, the department would like to thank the community once again for donation monies that are making it possible to update a couple more much-needed pieces of equipment. My answer, Ed, is they may want to comment on the new equipment.
Well, we purchased, uh, new fire gear for one firefighter that just got off probation. And.
Blue lights.
Uh.
Couple blue lights.
Yeah, we're getting fixed, replaced and a couple lights. From the.
Thank you. First your time, Jamie.
Everything's been slow. If you see Ryan, Lance, now Melinda too, be sure you're thanking them for running the calls. Obviously, I'm not, I'm a little more MIA than normal with new city council roles and what I have going on with kids and sports and everything, so you don't see me very often. Snowball got to see me for a minute. That's part of his day. We talked about in our last regular meeting, and this is something like of a, maybe a capital municipal improvement project for the city, and we need to discuss it with the fire department, but I'm gonna get out in front of them, because Ryan and Lance got tired of the fire department again about it, but something needs to be done with the bathroom and the fire station. That shower is long past disgusting. It's not even operable. It doesn't drain and it doesn't work. If we got guys coming back from hazmat calls, or if we're going to a infested house, it would be nice to keep a change of clothes up here. We have a washer and dryer, or, you know, washer, we can wash our clothes. I would keep a change of clothes up here, so if I went to a house that was infested with good lord knows what, I could shower and then go home, instead of dragging that crap to my home at the, at the relative price of free. Because that's what we're doing. We're doing it basically for the relative price of free. So Jordan has offered to, to pony labor, like they did for the office, I mean, same kind of deal. I mean, if you remember what the old office looked like in there compared to what it looks like now, it's a hundred times different. And I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent certain the bathroom that we have in there doesn't even come in code for a fire station. But that's a whole other can of worms for another time. So, I mean, like I said, I'm out in front of the fire department. They're supposed to, you know, be sure the building and how our lab works, try to figure out that aspect of it, but the sooner it gets mentioned to you guys, the quicker that maybe something can start flourishing. If you haven't seen it, feel free to walk over there and look at the bathroom and then the shower specifically.
I want to see the office.
Yeah, go over there. I encourage everybody to walk through our fire station and come sit down at the meeting we have. You know. We get a lot of flak when we don't show up, but there's only four or five of us sitting around that table for months at a time and years at a time, so. Like I said, feel free to look at that shower. Like, Jordan would pony up the labor, and I think Ryan said, kind of Jordan would be the labor if we could come up with a logical solution for the shower and whatever other. That sink, I think, was on the list too.
Is that like one of those metal?
No, it's glass.
It's plastic.
It's about this big.
It, it was a cheap.
And it's like wedged into a room that it's too big for.
You can't even open the door.
You have to like go around it and get in it.
Could you, could you put that this way instead?
You got to find an angle. Shower. Don't go cheap on that bathroom. For God's sakes, don't go cheap on that bathroom. You'll pay for it.
Is this experience?
It doesn't have a lot, it don't have a lot of room. To make it.
And with this, this is what, kind of a community disaster area, if something blew up in the town of Liston, we had to house people here. I think you'd need a workable shower for the, for that aspect.
I think so.
I mean, you got to work with bathrooms, but we can't get through that door to use them, but, um.
Sure.
The, the shower would be a.
Nice.
Just something for. To get out from. Other than that, those on the bus go round and round, except people are still sick.
Another, um, and we're not gonna get into it tonight, but another capital improvement project is what Hank is interested in, and I think that's a community-wide fundraising touch on that as well. The, the figure, the figure later.
I think there might be some grant work out there. I, I heard here buzz about it, because Jay asked me. Go, I told Christie, go to the R L N page in Hardaway, go to the R L N grant. I'm pretty sure that they would buy one. Just, it's a simple grant to fill out. I think it's upwards of fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars they do. The figure is like nine hundred dollars. So I think.
No, we talked about seventeen thousand.
Oh, oh, you're talking about a Zoll, a monitor, a cardiac monitor.
Yeah.
The chest pressure.
Oh, a Lucas device. Okay. AEDs, electrical shock, pressures are, yeah, okay, not public. Yeah, a Lucas device.
So that, I mean, that's a long-term, community-wide project as well.
There's grants out there, I mean, all sorts of things, um, so just keep your eyes open for few grants and, I don't know how many emails you can get, Christie, what you do and don't give, but there's resources out there, at least I think. Fire rider grants, local businesses.
So, a question with that. Put it on, calm down. Unity point or whoever comes and gets them, right?
Right.
How are you gonna get your Lucas device back?
We go with it. Our truck goes with it, because it's gonna be taken off when they get to the receiving facility.
So you have, you'll be going with it?
We'll, we'll go with it, yeah. We'll follow if they don't ride. We'll go with it. That's how we do it north, so that's how we would do it south. It's just implementing something for everybody to be universal, but that's all it is.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, thanks to Alice, Pam, Craig. Anything else, Jamie and Alice? Garth, Devon, and Pam.
Okay, we bought some P P's, so I hope I can plant those here, stay dry in the next week or two. We got given money from Devon Cretchfield to buy more trees. She would like me to go pick them out, so I think it should buy another four or five, somewhere around there.
Did she have an area that she wanted to exploit?
No, she wanted me to put them wherever I wanted to put them. That's what's her exact words, so. She just hits for her parents, old Pete Peterson and Linda, that's for them. And then, I talked to my family yesterday. We're planning on donating a tree for my grandpa at the cemetery, hopefully. Along the drive is clear, near his headstone, so, um, we plan to put one out there, which will hopefully have an updating this month or something. We're gonna figure it out as a family. Other than that, um, I'd like to see the flower, maybe some attention on the building. I don't know.
We've got somebody working.
You do, okay.
And he's got more chips.
Okay, you do have more, okay. My only other thing was, we talked about getting a couple benches over here. You never had anybody doing it, right? So.
To what?
So we talked about getting a couple benches over here, get rid of that old one. That's all crooked and bar.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, in the bar. I get rid of that one. I was thinking about a couple benches like that are out front here. So I can get some quotes, some ideas for that.
They come out of our homes.
Yeah. Those exactly, yes. Okay. Other than that, I think that was it for now. Already addressed the merry-go-round. But, um, I'm still waiting to hear from Deb. She's got an idea of what type of tree she wants, but she really just told me she wanted to pick them out for her parents and, uh, she just felt like owning the town, because the town's been a lot. She's been around town.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
General and utilities, anything on that?
Uh, I have one question. It got brought up the last two months from Jim. Are we gonna do anything about the old four-H lot? Because I thought it was gonna be on the agenda tonight, and it wasn't. And I didn't catch it until we were already two minutes in.
Right. It needs to be added.
So can we put that on agenda next month? So I see no reason not to.
When is the four-H lot?
Four-H garden.
Was the garden was.
That corner. Where Shai used to live, that corner, and that's just grass. They had asked if they could purchase it, and I just noticed it was not here. Apologize, I didn't notice it earlier, but, um, I'd like to get that addressed one way or another, so that is all I have.
Sanitation, Ted, like?
So I've got a waterfall and out there a hundred thousand gallons per day.
And you're right. Ten thousand, an extra zero. Ten thousand apostrophes.
That's, that's a hundred thousand, not ten thousand.
I'm all right.
Is she at this?
But I was just asking, is zero wrong?
No, there's a hundred thousand gallons of water. Well, it says three hundred and thirty gallons after him, so.
Yeah, she had an extra zero. It's ten thousand times thirty.
Well, that's why I was just saying.
She was gonna get somebody to look at it.
Any more on that?
I'm done with that.
All right, um, public safety. I don't think we have anything on that, do we? All right, community building we discussed, correct? All right, there has no report. Uh, addresses concerns that have not been addressed.
Go ahead. That's all right. Having been, uh, here for these meetings, uh, long enough to know how much of a debacle that house was down there. Everything up until this point, I just want to say I am a little bit disappointed in how it's been. You know, personally, I don't know if, you know, if I want, basically, was could be a housing project, I guess, but the Liston City Housing Project is what is what comes to mind, I guess, when I'm thinking about what's going on down there. But I did talk to a Marshalltown City Council member, Mike Lodihoff, about the circumstances as far as trying to acquire somebody, uh, to build or whatever the city decides as far as selling that lot. He said they, he has never been involved in anything like that, so I don't know. You know, I don't think this is something that happens very often, at least not around here. That being said, you know, lower costs to draw them and force a special contract, you know, all the potential issues that can come up with that. In the meantime, the city is responsible for maintaining, you know, the property. It just seems like the money pit continues to get deeper, you know? And it's, it's costing us all money still to this day, so, you know. Someone who is potentially a resident could purchase that lot and not only relieve the city of its burden, but could also be improving on it, which would be a net benefit for everybody. That's all.
Just to, just to add to what Justin said, uh, Marshalltown hasn't seen that because they have a building code. They have a building code and their city is zoned, and that's, that's what we need if that's what we want to go to. And what you guys are trying to do now is a mini zoning project, because we, you talked about, you know, trying to limit, you know, the, the growth of the city, you know? And I'm right with you. Justin and I are on opposite ends of this, but, uh, that's the reason Marshalltown doesn't have, hasn't seen anything like that, because they have to follow their building code. You know, and they have, they have their town zoned, so that you can't build a stockyard in the middle of town. You can't build a, you know, you can't put a storage building in the middle of a residential area. But we're not zoned. We don't, we don't have that, 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 that plus and that minus. Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot more difficult than what it sounds, sounds.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot more difficult than what it sounds, uh, sounds like. But, yeah, it's, uh, it's something that, you know. It, it's a diffi- difficult challenge and honestly, you guys have to decide. Now, the options that, and we talked about it a little bit earlier, uh, how many properties have we got here in town that basically nobody owns?
Or they own and they don't.
Quite a few. Quite a few. Why is that? Because the law basically has been ignored. So when a person dies, you typically are required to liquidate their, their property, liquidate their, and that's just the way, the way the law is written. Uh, we choose to ignore that, so then we end up with sons and daughters, and we end up with grandsons and granddaughters, nieces and nephews and uncles, and, and we end up in a situation like we're in right now. Same thing. My, my granddaughter with four will be sitting at a, at a city council meeting trying to decide what to do with 111, uh, when she has her granddaughter on her knee. Okay, so, a whole bunch of sailor phrases come to mind, which I won't share with you now, but, uh, uh, basically, you need to decide, you know, we, we need to decide. If, if it is too hard without our, without a zoning ordinance, you know, without the city being zoned, then I guess we have to just knuckle under and say it's too hard.
I guess I just don't wanna get landlord. I want, I want somebody to be able to buy.
Agree, agree, and everybody wants that.
Yeah, we're gonna find empty lots all over town.
And, and what, I think my, my estimate of information, we're already there, okay? Partially there anyway, so. But, you know, that's, uh, that's just something we have to decide. And, and like every other decision, uh, made by a, a public entity, half of us aren't gonna like it. Sorry. The one other comment, sorry, Justin, you brought that up. I have, I have jumped on that, sorry. Uh, but the, one other thing, uh, this drainage tile thing. Uh, if you think Chapi, uh, Chapi is gonna fix that drainage issue, uh, he's not gonna fix it. Because of the, of the root cause of it, funny, that should be a root cause, right? But the, because the root cause is still there, you know, we're, we're dealing with.
That tree is gone. Isn't that tree gone?
No, no, it's, it's two trees.
And, and those, you, you could chop those, those willow trees down and, and once again, my granddaughter would still be fighting the roots from those stupid trees. They, they last forever. We're dealing with a drainage system that was designed when, when World War II was a, was a fresh memory. Earlier than that?
Oh, crap.
We're talking the Great War here, okay?
The property owner takes down those trees before we do anything with that tile line.
Yeah, okay.
Whose tree? Isn't it his tree?
Is the city responsible for it?
The tree?
No, the tile.
Yes.
It's a city tile.
It's a city tile.
Oh, it is, okay. Even if it's on your property?
Well, it's through the easement. It's on the edges.
Okay.
That, that's the challenge.
It's directly the product.
The product, the part that is the problem is not through an easement. Not through a designated easement, right down through the middle of the property.
Right underneath the trailer.
Right underneath that trailer.
So.
Makes sense in nineteen forty or whatever it was.
Okay, so what you're saying is the city needs a new drainage system.
So, do we need to look at that?
Right.
You know, maybe that's, maybe that's something we ought to look at. Maybe there's a way we can, you know? I don't know.
Right. Something that actually matters, like infrastructure.
But I would, I, I would make one suggestion, uh, I, I would suggest that you go out and poll three hundred people that live here in the city of Liston and challenge any one of them outside of maybe one and two, uh, that could tell you that those drain tiles even exist. Alright? And I could tell you that those one, two people are both older than I am, and that's not good.
Terrible.
That's terrible. Thanks, thanks, you guys.
On those tiles, I was just asking her, is there a map for kind of, or is there a map of where those tiles are?
Oh, there is.
I just.
Darwin's.
Yeah, beside the living map, is there a paper map?
I don't know where it's coming.
Where technically?
Where it starts at, nearby the church somewhere. Yeah, I was just. There was a way to remind you. Huh?
Jared used to know that stuff, but I should have forgotten.
Well, he, he probably still remembers chunks, and maybe that's what we need to do, is maybe we need to start putting chunks together.
Actually put on paper.
Does John write?
He probably knows chunks.
Alright, anything else? Any other unanswered residents' concerns?
Uh, here.
Wait, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Well, we'll snack it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.